All right, welcome everyone to the Plimpton School Committee meeting for September 21st, 2020 pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th Vicomposte suspending certain provisions in the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may be when they gather among place this meeting at the Plimpton School Committee. It is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public has been permitted, but every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order using Zoom, either by computer or telephone. This meeting is being recorded for informational purposes only and is not considered to be a public record. Oh, there we go. Now we've got the official business out of the way, we'll dive into it. I see we have a number of folks on here, so thanks for, actually, folks for joining. We may have some more that will join in as well, so welcome for that. We had the minutes for July 13th and July 22nd. Did folks have a chance to take a look at those?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our July 13th and our July 22nd meeting.
Second that.
Pollen favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, thank you. I did not have any tours much better than this. I need to house the main office. Oh, good. Right along.
Actually, John, I do want to amend that.
Okay.
So I just want to thank our Board of Health in Plimpton for sending us regular updates, guidance that they're receiving from past people and extremely helpful and helpful to have that information.
So I would agree. I would agree. They're good updates and we're passing them on, although it's also good to hear, I know that we, I passed something along the other day and Nurse Fox had already gotten it. So that was, that's good to hear that it's getting as quickly to our nurses at the school as we are getting it from the Board of Health, maybe a little quicker, which is great. So that's, thanks for bringing that up. I asked Matt Durkey to join us, so Matt, welcome. I think we've actually, we haven't met in person because of everything going on, but I know I saw you on one of these Silver Lake calls, but I thought it was good, given everything that's going on, to get an update from you on the state of the Denet and all of the, all of the work that you have been helping to get done there to make us ready for school as we were on Thursday. So I turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, John. It's good to see you again. Yes, I mean, as you alluded to, we've been doing a lot of work throughout the districts in all the schools. You know, I, we've had airflow testing down there, and the good news is that for the most part, the building is operating normally. We've got good airflow exchange back on that. The other good part about that, as far as, aside from just knowing where we're at with airflow exchanges, is knowing some deficiencies, which airflow will, will flag for us as far, as far as knowing which area we want to focus on in the building. And those improvements are ongoing, if not already completed. For instance, we had a girls' and boys' room, I believe it's over by the gym, where the exhaust fans were not working, and we're not sure if that was due to the shutdown during the summer or what, but because of the airflow, we, it was, it was flagged for not being adequate ventilation, so we looked into it with Peter and Julie over there, who's been a great help. Those restroom exhaust fans have been fixed. Also, one area to report, there was really the only troubled area was the music and art room, which had a low, it was just below two air changes per hour. You know, we're looking at a range anywhere from four to 10, especially for some of these larger spaces. We discovered that that has a faulty motor, which has been ordered, as also a fuse, both have been ordered, and is scheduled for installed this Wednesday through Cotty Johnson. Cotty Johnson is also, because of the Wednesday professional development, that is going to be our day to address some of these issues that we can take care of only inside the classroom so as to not disrupt the learning. Cotty Johnson will be at the Denet on Wednesday, pretty much full day. I know that Pete is working with some of his teachers to possibly free up that space because of the remote learning side of it, so we can get the technicians in that room and work while the students aren't in the building. Are there any questions as far as HVAC before I go on to other building improvements?
I have one question for you, and it's, it's nice to finally meet you and thank you for taking such good care of our building over the summer, especially in light of everything that you've been having to handle. Are we using CO2 monitors as a proxy to give us an idea of air exchange, or how are we monitoring how our HVAC units are handling the air exchange in the building?
Sure. So that would be a separate test, the CO2 monitoring unless it had, unless the classroom itself has a CO2 monitor, much like you're in your home, or some of the higher-end HVAC systems will have those, that monitoring within the system. This, the airflow, air change per hour is measured by, pretty much, it looks like a laundry basket that you put over the univentilator and you're measuring how much air is coming in. And then you're using that same mechanism at an exhaust fan, where you would put that up to the exhaust fan and measure how much is being exhausted, and a calculation gives you the air changes per hour. That's how you come up with the ACH. The CO2, obviously that, the airflow helps, the reason for air exchange is to remove odors and CO2. But on the airflow exchange test, you're not measuring the CO2.
Yeah.
So that would- Just by measuring the volume of air exchange, I totally get that, and I actually prefer that methodology, so I'm happy to hear you're using it. I just knew that some people had tried the CO2 as a proxy for that.
Sure.
But I like the air volume measurements that you're doing even better, so that's great to hear.
And with it, you know, obviously, everything costs money, so by using the air change test, it allows us to be more efficient in our approach to bringing our system back to where we need it. So that's able to red flag areas that we can then focus on and bring those up, and then, you know, work our way down the line. The air quality test is what would measure pollen counts, mold count, mold spores, and your CO2. So that would be a separate test, which we have not performed yet, but is always an option. Again, there's a cost to that as well. I would, I would estimate that the Denet would, would be in the $2,000 range for a test like that of air quality. So that's what I have for HVAC. Today, we just installed the air purifiers in the nurse's office and the medical waiting room, so those are up and running at the Denet. There has been, across the district, custom Plexiglas or Germ Shield installs, mainly at the high-traffic areas, main office, nurses' area, cafeteria, and kitchen. Also, we, we moved forward with a tremendous touchless faucet replacement at the Denet. That is now complete. Also, we've been working with Judy and Pete with social distancing signs, and all of those are now installed in the school as well.
I believe we're also, we've also been installing the touchless paper towel dispensers as, as they, as they come in?
As they come in, yes.
We weren't the only people that we're looking for, though, apparently. As with everything, right?
Well, you know, when I, one of my tours of the building, I did notice that a lot of the paper towel dispensers are single pull, and they, they cut off by themselves, so in theory, you're only touching that paper towel, but of course, there's a lever underneath it, so I'm sure children just go in there and just hammer on the, on the lever instead of pulling each one individually, so we can see how a touchless would be favorable in that environment. But yes, we're moving forward with those as well. Luckily, we haven't, we've been, been able to avoid a lot of, a lot of products that have been backlogged. We've been very fortunate to work with contractors and suppliers that have really pushed us up in line to, to receive some of these items, so to that, I'm very thankful for the companies that we've been contracting with. They've been able to supply as needed somehow when the rest of the country is trying to get all the same materials, so I'm very happy about that.
Is there anything else for the Denet that you, that is sort of on the list, either in the short or medium term, that we need to just be aware of?
Well, now that we're moving out of the, the cooling season, there is some air conditioning work that needs to be done. There's a chiller that needs a little bit of love over there. Cotty Johnson's going to be looking at that, but at this point now, that's kind of, has moved down the priority list. We're focusing in on the classroom spaces and the, and the office spaces. They've brought a couple of the rooftop exhaust fans up to normal operation. There's a couple of smaller items. It was actually brought to me by the plumber we were using for those faucet installs to, just a heads up, we want to paint those, make sure that the, the gas supply lines are painted yellow. So that's one thing that, that we'll be working on there as well. And we're still working through fire suppression in, in connection with the, with the fire department, and PETA, obviously, and, and Julie. So we're still working through that, but I believe the Denet is in really good shape facility-wise. Oh, well, I should say, I should mention, if we're going to be talking about anything with the building, the siding of the building will be something that has to be discussed as we move forward. It appears that the siding of the building is a compressed particle board, so that in nature is going to be breaking down over time. So as we continue to meet, that's, that would be a capital plan-type measure that would be looking to, to throw some money at that, that direction as well.
So as you, as you start to think about some of that stuff, Matt, I actually have more than one role in town, and we have a town properties committee that is trying to sort of keep track of all of the big-ticket items. We also have the roof listed on that for some point down the road when we will be eligible for perhaps some matching funds, since it would be a big-ticket item for the town, since it's a hodgepodge of various roofs, roofs up there. But so for anything like that, you know, if you have an estimated time of when we might need to do it, what we might need to replace it with, a ballpark figure, that's something we want to keep track of, looking not just at the Denet, but at the Denet, the townhouse, the fire station, police station, old townhouse, any of the town barn, they're all things, we're trying to get a much better sort of holistic view as a town as to what we have and what's coming, so that we can plan for, for other sort of big-ticket items. We have an aging fire station, we have, you know, a number of other things. So any of that information you have, please just toss it my way, I'll make sure it gets up in the right places so we can start getting an idea of what's coming. It's probably even more important as we start looking at debt retiring and, and how we're going to fund any number of other items in town, and hopefully, we can pick a slightly better product this time around.
I agree.
Because there's, we've, we've seen more than once the benefits of a low bid with the Denet. I think you had a couple bathrooms you had to replace a year or two ago, Peter, didn't you? Thanks to the low bid? Yeah, so, but it's great to be able to identify that so that it doesn't show up as a surprise when it's fully failing, and then we have to figure out a way to, to find the money, you know?
Sure.
Before town meeting.
I agree. And John, to your point of low bid, I mean, these airflow tests have, are, yeah, airflow tests have indicated some areas where it's not registering any type of exhaust, not your building, but, but just buildings in general, and you would never know until you get those results, and then you go into the area, and of course, to low bidder, you look up in the, the drop ceiling, and it's just a register, it's not connected to anything. You know, that's the type of problems you run into, so, yeah, the good news is, we've, we have a really great idea of how to approach and what to approach. So now we'll just be moving forward with that, but the Denet is in great shape.
Do any other school, school committee members have any other questions? Anyone else on the call? Matt, thank you so much for, for stopping in sort of last minute. I know it sort of occurred to me as we were throwing the agenda together, and I really appreciate you making the time. I think it's particularly important, given everything that's going on now, and of course, all the work that you guys have done. So thank you so much for that, and you should feel free to get on with your evening or back to work, whichever it is.
Back to work. I appreciate, I appreciate the invite, John, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. So while we have the school committee members together, I thought it was opportune time for us to try and talk about what a good standard meeting time would be for us, meaning what time of the evening, because I know with, you know, it doesn't matter too much to me at this point, but I know that some of our, some of our members have differing schedules, so, and at least as long as we are in the, in the world of virtual meetings, we can probably be a little more flexible, because at least if you're, if you're home and you click, click, you know, all done with the meeting, you're home, you know, it's not a big issue of commuting and all that. But, so Dan, I know you have timing issues, and I think both, both Amy and Mike, as far as getting out of work and being able to, because we had, we had tentatively agreed to move to like 6 o'clock, but then I think 6 o'clock runs into some trouble with you, Dan. Let's figure out where we might best be to make it as easy as possible for the members, and then let's see how that works for our other administration folks who are joining us too.
As, as far as my schedule, I'm generally on a train at 6 o'clock, so even moving this to 5:30, I just switch with somebody else, and that helps me out, but, you know, I don't need you guys to cater to me specifically, because I can just try and find somebody else to switch with if 6 o'clock is, is the best for everybody else, I can make that work.
Does 6:30 make it better for you? I'm not having some picture, or is it that doesn't necessarily help?
That, that may help. It may make it easier, but in the volatile world of public transportation, as you guys hear on the news constantly, apparently the T has problems running their service, and, and then when things start breaking down, they start plucking us out of our normal routine and, and sending us everywhere. So there may be days where I just can't attend because of something like that, but, but I can be pretty flexible, whatever works for everybody else, I'll make it work on my end.
Yeah. Amy and Mike, is later better for you guys to be able to be home instead of commuting from the office?
Go ahead, Amy.
Oh, you can go, Mike.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, no, Johnny, if we, if we continue to do it this way, it's, this is, this is fine, because I'm still at work, so it's just going to be a, when we, when we switch to get back home quickly, you know?
Right, right.
But it, but 5:30, if we, we want to do it at 5:30, that's fine, you know what I mean?
Jill and Peter, Christine, does timing make too much of a difference from your perspective? You know, 5:30, 6:00, 6:30, 7:00, I mean, I don't want to go too late, but we're generally done in an hour, and I know we'll have to think about it when we get back to, whenever that is, when we get back to having to meet in person, because we don't want to make it too late, particularly for folks that have to commute.
So I think, you know, we're, we're flexible, we'll make whatever we need to work, work. I think in, in general, the 5:30, 6:00 works for us when we're in person in particular, because we don't always go for an hour, and then sometimes it's, you know, depending upon what the issues may be, it could be a very late night, so that would be the only thing that would potentially concern any of the administrative staff, is depending upon how long the meeting goes, the, the sooner we start, the less likely we are to have a, a 10 o'clock ending time, and in some, in some cases, we've gone even past that, so, because of the circumstances, so that would be our only concern.
I, I, I agree, I understand that, though I'm not sure even in our worst time, at least in six years, we've gone an hour and a half in Plimpton, but that always, that always could change. All right. So, so Dan, you're saying it doesn't matter too much, and, and my assumption is, is that at some point, we'll be back into a more regular rhythm of meetings, that may take us a little bit, but I think the, the marathon meetings we did this summer are probably, we don't have to do that again, but, you know, we'll, we'll get back to the more periodic, I think, as we get further into the school year, because it's going to be whatever the, whatever normal is, is coming, you know? So we'll see where that goes.
5:30 or 6:00 works for me, but I don't need to hold anybody hostage. If I just have enough advance warning, I can figure it out, so I'm fine, but 5:36 would be ideal.
All right, why don't we do, why don't we plan on 6:00 then? Because I think that's, I know that's better for Amy, and then we will adjust as we go, and Dan, you know that if, if you have to, you have to miss part of the meeting, then that's what it is. So, all right, excellent. Then I think we move on to school committee positions. This is something we, we talked about, seems like a long time ago, because it was the beginning of the summer, and Dan, you didn't have a chance to weigh in on this, because you weren't able to be at that, at that first meeting. So I think we probably need to, to take a look at that again, and try and, try and make sure that you have some representation. And Dan, what this is, is this is about the subcommittees that, that we have, and that was included, I think the list was included in the email that Lisa had sent out for the So for these, you know, we have, a lot of these, we kept pretty much the same. Jason, when does the Pilgrim Area Collaborative typically meet?
We typically meet on Thursday evenings. I haven't received a schedule for this year. We usually don't have our first meeting until October. We've been getting regular updates from the executive director, obviously, with everything going on, but our first meeting isn't generally until October.
And then are those monthly or every six weeks?
They are monthly, but sometimes there are other opportunities for some subcommittees. I do know that we negotiated all of our contracts with our major bargaining units last year, so I don't anticipate there being much subcommittee work this year.
And, and this is one particular, Jason jumped on this one, he had been on it for a while before. This is, this is a, a subcommittee that I actually can't do because of my job, because they actually have control over the retirement funds for the collaborative teachers, and because of my, my, my work, I'm, I'm not permitted to have an outside activity that involves choosing investments or having oversight of that. But this is the, this is the collaborative that, based of Plymouth, that we are, we are a member of, along with, how many other towns, Jason?
There's eight other towns on the board, including us, but we service students from over 42 communities.
And so it's kind, it's kind of like this meeting, but just specific to the collaborative, and a little, little more focused, I think, than, than the stuff we do. So this is one that is sort of an open position that I think we'd like to do, and then, I don't know, in looking through these various things, if there's anything else that you're, you would be, that you're interested in, you'd want to swap off with, or be an alternate on? And if you want to, we can, we could even take this, you and I could take this offline and have a separate discussion about it.
Yeah, that'd probably be better. I just haven't had a chance to look at it all.
Okay. So why don't we, why don't we do that? I'll, I'll reach out to you after this, and we'll get some time, the next couple of days, to talk through it. And then, most likely, I can get back to Jill with some tweaks to it. I don't think anyone else here is particularly wedded to any specific thing, so we can, we can see if there's a few spots to give you a little more exposure, and then we'll adjust that, and then we can confirm it at our next, next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving on, down to playground. Jason, would you like to talk to that?
So I'd love to give an update, but we did receive some language from Joe Dufour, who we've been working with now for, for about a year, and did pass that along to Christine and Peter to see if we could put together an RFQ for that, but we've been extremely busy, July and August, trying to figure out the budgets for the school with the delayed town meetings and the delayed monies from the state. It has not been at the top of our list with trying to reopen our schools and redesign education in Plimpton for this school year. So we are ready to put together an RFQ with that information we have from Joe, and hopefully, once things settle and we get into a rhythm, that can be something that we put back at the top or close to the top of the list. I just know how long the list had been for our administrators, and I haven't wanted to really push too hard on that.
And I do think, and I, I agree, I agree fully with that, we had very, a lot of really hard work to get done, and, and my guess is, is we still have a fair amount of work to do as we're settling into, to this new year and trying to figure that out. I do think, though, that we, and we don't have to do this tonight, but I think maybe by our, by whatever our next meeting is, we probably need to try and set a date to try and hit that, even if it is further out, because I think it's one of those things, if we don't get it out, we have the risk that costs continue to go up and so on and so forth, and it would be nice to at least get, get that moved along so we can, we can, because I know it's been a long time in the waiting, and a lot of the students have been waiting for it, but, you know, we've had a, we've basically reinvented the Denet in a couple of weeks, so I think that takes, certainly takes practice, but as with anything, when we have too much to do and too little time to do it, sometimes we just have to sort of put those dates out there to try and hold ourselves to it, but I think we're not quite there yet. Okay. I almost like leaving this one on here just because it's fun. I assume the power lines are exactly the place that they've been? Eight feet, seven feet off the ground?
You're finding it more fun than I am, John. They're still there, yes, and they still contain power, which is good.
Yeah, okay, well, that, that to me falls further down past the playground as far as things that we need to be chasing right now. Clearly, the utilities companies don't have a problem with where they are, even though they look kind of low to me. Okay. Going on to standing committees, do we have anything for administrative review? No?
No meeting.
Mike, do you have an update?
No, no meeting.
Okay, no meeting, I see, okay. Negotiations, I think we're at the point- I think we're at the point where, Jill, everything is signed off. Are we all signed at this point for all the various things for Plimpton?
I haven't received a signed document yet, so I'm not sure. I'm assuming you signed it first and then it went forward, John? And, yep.
Yeah, but the, but the one, both the teachers' contract is set. We were just waiting for a minute. Yeah, so the teacher's contract is done. The aides' contract is done. This has all been going on over the summer. And then we've had a number of meetings on the memorandum of understanding for how we're operating in this unique time. And I think we're in agreement, but we're waiting for the final signed documents. So hopefully, next time, that will be all set. It's just running around the e-sign protocol. So check your emails, folks. All right. Union thirty-one. I don't think we've had a meeting since last, no.
No, we haven't.
You just, you just said we just, you haven't had a meeting. Next one's in October. And on to policy. So we have a second reading, the alphabet soup of policies.
Motion to waive the actual reading of the policies.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All right. In favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
So I'll save Jill the trouble. A lot of these policies are just to allow us to operate our schools with the current COVID-19 emergency. If there's no questions, I'm not going to say anything more about them.
Any questions out there? And then can I motion?
All right. So I will make a motion to approve policy ADDA, ADDAR, EBCFA, EEA, EEAEC, EAG, GCA, IC/ICA, ID, IIB, JH, JL, JLCC, JRK, and KI.
I think you meant JRA and KI.
Yeah, I did. Thank you for the friendly amendment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second as long as I don't have to repeat all that.
Fair enough.
Okay.
All, all in favor of these policies?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Capital improvement. I don't think we have any updates there. Legislative?
So I hate to be the legislative agent in an election year, especially one like the one we're currently in. You know, the State House is relatively quiet right now, because they are pursuing a lot of reelections across the state. We do hope to have a finalized budget sometime in November. I kind of predicted this way back in April, that we wouldn't have one until November, until after elections. And it looks like that is definitely the timeline they're working on. A minor concern is there are a lot of watchdog groups out there who are still predicting about a $5 billion shortfall in revenues. But both the legislative branch and the executive branch have made promises that they will at least level fund Chapter Seventy. So we're in good shape, but I don't know how they're going to balance the rest of their budget. Federal, there is nothing happening down in the federal government right now that could help support our schools, maybe backfill some of the losses we've seen locally. So again, I think we need to stay tuned and see what happens with all of the elections, both local and federally. And maybe we'll see some more movement in November and December.
Yeah, it is kind of a tough year to be the legislative agent. I agree with you on that. Christine, I believe, do we have any single signature warrants since last time?
We do, John. On August twenty-fourth, the superintendent and John Williamson electronically signed seven warrants totaling $121,053.30. And then just to let you know, I will be sending you another warrant this week, because I've committed to the town to have a CARES Act warrant for them, so they can complete their work for their, their final submission. But I did just see, have an email that Jill forwarded to me, that Plymouth County has given them an extension. But I'm still going to complete that warrant, just so the town has an idea of where they are with the funds and if they can make any decisions on any of the funds that might be made available to us.
Okay. Did they, they put a date or are they just stringing us along?
It said it was extended till October thirtieth, I believe, from October second.
Well, that's a little more reasonable, considering that we're all just trying to get doors open and kids in the seats. So that at least, that takes a little bit of the pressure off. And we'll come back and talk about the CARES stuff when we get to the COVID-19 piece of that. And I do remember signing them. I just can't remember when I sign things anymore, so it's all just a blur. I know I do.
I do keep track of that.
Yes, I know. It's just, I think it was right after our last meeting, which is when I signed them last. So, okay, great. Amy, I'm not sure if you're with us still. Do you have an update on CASA?
I think you have her, I think you have her muted, John.
Oh, well, that wouldn't be helpful. It's not giving me the option to... There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Thank you. So CASA, they have a meeting tomorrow night, so I'll have an update at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Benito, what's going on?
That's kind of a loaded question, John, but I'll do my best. The good news is that children are back in the building at the Denet where they belong. And it's, it's been really a fantastic opening on a lot of different levels. We started with eleven days of professional development work with our staff. Different categories ranging from the use of Schoology to WeVideo, incorporating some, some new curriculum with Second Step, working on the social emotional component. But as far as children actually being in the building, we had Cohort B in for two days last week. We had Cohort A in for the first time today. From an operational standpoint, the drop-off and pickup procedures have been great. That information was sent out to families. We were trying to be very cautious about not overwhelming families on any one given day. So we tried to stagger emails or blasts out from Parent Square, just so the people weren't overwhelmed. And I think we were fairly successful with that. We've got new, as Matt made reference to, we have new signage in the building. Our custodial staff has moved an enormous amount of furniture out of classrooms to maximize the amount of space we can have for children. They've done a great job getting the building ready. Every morning, we're doing the health screener, and parents have been very responsive to that. We have a handful of parents that have not signed up for that yet. So it was even the, the second day of use on Friday, when Nurse Fox or one of the office staff were making the phone call and parents were seeing our phone numbers and said, I know, I forgot. I'll do it right now. So they're already kind of getting into that routine, which is great. That's what we want. And with all the different procedures, because basically, as has been stated here at this meeting, everything has been rewritten. Every one of our procedures, from recess to lunch to dismissal, everything has been brand new. And as, as I suspected, once we had all staff back in place, we worked together, had a lot of positive meetings and just brainstorming what would work, what would make the most sense for kids, what's going to keep everyone safe. But the true players in the, the people that have been impacted the most are the kids. And quite frankly, they have adjusted to everything absolutely fine. Kids, kindergarten was in for the first time today. They had masks on. It was not an issue. We're using some different techniques to make sure that we're maintaining social distancing, especially kids lining up to leave the cafeteria. They, they stretch out both arms. And if you're touching somebody, you're too close. So it's all those day-to-day things that have had to change a little bit, but the kids have been fine. They've done a great job with it. Our families have been fantastic in responding to some of the changes. Recession so far, so good. We have our custodial staff that's wiping down the equipment every morning. As I said, in the afternoon, we've been using the Pickup Patrol app, which has been, it's been great. It's been a little, a little glitchy from time to time, but I think that that might just be, we have new users and it's new to us. We were hoping to be using tablets, but we've all been using our own iPhones. So I think, I know I have big fat fingers and I've accidentally tapped on the wrong child from time to time, but it's been great. We've had an army of people outside at pickup and kids have been getting in safely. And again, parents have been great. I credit Judy Hansen and Lucy Fuller a lot for getting the Pickup Patrol up and running. They put a lot of time and energy into that. And it's only going to get easier. It's keeping our kids safer. It's getting that line moving faster. So despite all of the, I don't want to say worrying, but let's call it worrying slash planning about what the school year is going to look like, it's been fantastic. It has been a very, very good opening. And I credit the teaching staff. I credit the support staff, the custodial staff. We, I suspected that we'd be ready. In the last few days, I've been evidence that, that, yeah, we're, we're ready to go. We need the kids in the building.
Well, you know, certainly from my perspective, thank you very much for all of the work that you guys have been doing. I know it's easy. We've had many a conversation as the summer went on with sort of scratching, a lot of scratching ahead of how we're going to do this. And we even had a little runaround on Wednesday night. So, you know, it's, it's definitely a difficult for everybody. Teachers I know are sort of starting fresh this year yet again. It's like being a teacher all over again. And, you know, truly appreciate that. I just opened it up to other committee members if you have any questions for Peter and us.
I'd just like to echo what you say. I know how many hours Peter's been putting into this. I know how many dinners he missed with his family over the summer. And I know that probably goes right down the line through his staff. And I just appreciate the effort and the time being put into it, you know, to keep our kids safe, to reexamine what it means to be a teacher and an educator. And I really do appreciate all the time and effort that everyone has put into it.
All right. Moving on. Christine, financial report?
Thank you. In your package tonight, you will find a financial. I was actually looking forward to this, because we haven't done this in a couple of months. So it was kind of exciting to have the opportunity to look at everything. Financially, for our financial purposes, the year is okay. We're not in a bad place yet. I think one of the things that we've just tried to do is just trying to get students back in school and find a way to financially make this happen. And how do we get through? One of the things that we had to take into consideration is the students that we have that go to Audis District Vocational. Within the district, we have students that go to three different schools. Each one has chosen a totally different way of returning to school. So we have some kids that aren't in school every day and some, we have, at South Shore Vocational, we have the bus has to go there twice a day some days. So we're just trying to, trying to make it work is the goal right now. But what I do know is we only had two students that ended up returning this year to go to Audis District Vocational. So there'll be savings there. The transportation may be a little more than I was expecting, just because of the, the varied types of runs that we're going to have to get through, but I think we'll still be okay. And the town and myself have been working with John Williamson on how to use CARES Act funding. We've had, it's been quite an adventure. And as I mentioned earlier, we have committed to the towns to getting, originally, they thought their deadline was October second. And they need time to process their information, because they need, can only get reimbursed once a check is issued. So we were trying to make their timeline work. We were committing to getting them a warrant by Wednesday, so they could complete that task during next week and get information to Plymouth County by the end of that week. I'm still going to try to work with that deadline. And if we have the opportunity, we will have the opportunity to get another warrant, because the warrants for debt, for the Denet are scheduled for next week. So we may have, if more invoices came in, we may have an opportunity to process those as well. So the town will have them on a timely basis and they can seek reimbursement on a timely basis.
So are we still at, are we still at $35,000 or so with invoices?
Let me just, I just double-checked before I talk to you. And I want to say we might be $42,454.
So we're still off a little bit.
But once we have that warrant together, we will forward you the invoices, because I know you were doing your own tracking system, but we'll forward those to you once the warrant is complete. So we should have the same information at that time.
What, and so it's great that we have a little extra time. I still want to try and get everything in, because my greatest fear with this is that, you know, we've authorized purchases of a certain amount that, for whatever reason, and let me take that back. Not only do you have to have a check, you have to have an invoice. It has to have the I-word on it, otherwise everything in the world ceases to exist. So if it's a purchase order with a check that's been cut, that's not good enough. So we're sort of caught a little bit in the hypocrisy here. And then, of course, some folks will only invoice you for what they're sending. And there's a lot of things that aren't being sent out all at the same time. And none of that works, because if we have, what we're working at right now is with the set amount of money for Plimpton. And when we pass this next deadline, which is now October thirtieth, then whatever money is still there goes back into the pot. And then the county will decide how to reallocate that money for the, across the county. And it may be allocated differently. It may not just be divided up the same way again, and then Plimpton gets its share. We may get, if we, and if using a good amount of it, they may say, oh, well, you've had a chance. But other communities that have particularly hard hit, maybe they get more. And so we don't, we can't pretend, we can't assume that anything exists after October thirtieth. But what I don't want to see us, what I don't want to see have happen is that we end up with, you know, $1,000 or $5,000 or $10,000 of whatever that we've committed to, that we don't, we aren't able to get that reimbursement. Because then it has only one place to come from, and that's that big spreadsheet we just looked at. And we don't have anything extra in that spreadsheet. It's a very tight budget. Folks remember us getting through that in May and June. And so that's why I have this sort of, and Christine has been very good to actually still answer my phone calls. So I appreciate that. But I do, I do want us, as we continue down this path, and hopefully, there will be more that we can deal with after October thirtieth, we probably need to set up something a little different for this than what our normal process is, because this is not the normal budget process, because this money is coming from a different pot. So I don't know, and I'll just toss it out there and we can figure out how it makes the most sense. But I kind of, I need, I need to be able to see, because when I have conversations with the fire chief and with the town administrator, I need to be able to see when we're requesting something and probably need to be part of the approval process for the purchase order. Just a quick email is fine, but just to say, yeah, that makes sense. Because I'm trying to keep track of what the town is willing to allocate us, because again, it's one pot. And make sure that the town's good with it, and therefore, that we have the room, I guess, the room to buy, right? And then that we can also efficiently get the invoices back. And so part of our process may even also have to include a reminder to the vendor that, you know, we need an invoice and we're going to cut you the check. And even if you're on back order for two weeks, that's okay. We need the invoice and the check, and we can do our piece and you can get your stuff ready to ship to us. And everything is done and done. Right? So.
Just seeing what we have been doing is, we do adhere to those guidelines, where we need to have an item received and invoiced before we process it on a warrant for payment. So once we're submitting all that to the town, and I'm also, well, as we're issuing purchase orders, I am forwarding those to the town, so they're aware of what we've committed to. The invoices that have been processed for payment, they will get. And after that, I will send them a list of what I believe is still open that has been committed through CARES Act. And there may be different mechanisms for reconciling that, but I want them, the town, I want the town to make the decision. Once I tell them what else I'm expecting, they can share with us if there are any other efforts they'd like us to put forth to make that a reality for them. But we are actually calling vendors. We're, we were finishing up Kingston today, so our accounts payable people are on the telephone, calling vendors, looking for invoices, getting them approved, making sure all the items have been received. So we have to try to make it as up to date and as complete as possible.
So, you know, I'm going to just toss this out there and I'm probably saying something that's completely driving every accountant crazy, but maybe in this situation, especially as we get closer to the end of October, we have to worry less about something being received versus being ordered and paid for an invoice because of the timing that we're dealing with. Or if we got everything done and there's still three weeks, we just don't, we don't order anything else from that. You know, I mean, and I think it depends also what we're ordering. You know, so I know we had to do that differently for the Chromebooks, because we couldn't have. They were not going to be received. But I think we may have to, for CARES Act specific reimbursements, we may more need to, well, it's like, like you do when you, when you go and you buy something off Amazon, right? We're invoiced and we've paid, and then we wait, the two-day shipping or the 10-day shipping, depending on what part of the COVID time you're in. And we may just have to think about that as an option, where we can at least make sure that we've got that part. Um, and we may just have to think about that as an option where we can at least make sure that we've got that part covered. And then we're going to have to chase the vendor to make sure that they actually deliver the product. It's not ideal, but I think the other side of it is first product shows up, we've paid for it. Or we have to pay for it and we don't have any reimbursement. So, um, I don't think, I think we've, I've seen all the purchase orders. But I guess if we're doing any more, I think it needs to come through, just shoot me an email. I'll, I'll make sure to get back to it quickly. Um, and then we can, we can go forward with it.
Do you want to send that to you before I send it to the chief and to, um, the town administrator?
Uh, for what we already have done, I think we can, you can just send it and then just copy me on that email. I don't need anything. And then we'll, then we'll see where we're at and understand now that we have a little more time, we can do that. We may have to still do another off cycle, um, for that.
I can do that. Are there any questions, were there any questions or anything else? Yep. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. I know just one more thing on the long list of things we're doing in this new world. Okay. Screen here earlier. Uh, professional development. I didn't see Ryan, so I assume you're taking that.
I am. So Ryan is at the Kingston School Committee meeting tonight that they called, um, after this meeting was already scheduled. Um, so we have kind of a duplication of meetings this evening, unfortunately. Uh, but in your packet, you do have the, um, the eleven days of professional development that took place prior to the start of school. Uh, and in August, uh, we met with all of our principals, assistant principals, coordinators, department heads. Take a look at what some of the survey results said from the past in terms of what people needed and wanted. Also taking into consideration how the time was to be spent in terms of preparing, in terms of health and safety, uh, needs for the building. And then working together to create, um, the schedule that you see before you. Really, um, I, I want to take a minute to, uh, thank both Ryan and Melissa Farrell for their efforts in helping to plan everything from technology like Schoology and WeVideo. Uh, to making sure that there was time for teachers to arrange their classrooms, uh, begin preparing for the opening. Uh, health and safety training with our school nurses. Uh, I also want to thank, um, Nurse Fox as well for her efforts, um, in helping to prepare. And then the building principals also played a role in these eleven days in terms of working with their administrative staff to make sure everything from protocols to the way a classroom was set up, to where signage should be, to making sure airflow survey results were. And there was a lot that went into this opening. And so I, I think that the professional development chart doesn't really, um, bring to life all of the efforts uh, or, or the important work that took place at this time. Uh, but I can't underscore how important these eleven days were to help prepare, uh, our staff and for the staff to be able to work together, um, to be ready for our students. On the first day, they had a welcome back from their principal. On the second and third day, Ryan and I visited each of the schools. We divided them in half. Uh, and it was nice to have, uh, people in the buildings and to, um, to be able to see them again and meet with them again in person. So the, the first eleven days, uh, really went very well and had a wide variety of opportunities for staff to help prepare for the, the school open. And happy to try to answer any questions you may have on behalf of Assistant Superintendent Lynch.
Looks like a pretty long list of stuff to do.
It was, and this is the clean, neat version, so.
Well, and, and it's, and it really, it covers the talking about what we need to do. It doesn't necessarily cover on there all the work that was done after you were told what you need to do.
Right.
No, I mean, it's. A Herculean task here we've gotten done. So thank you for that.
No problem. So are we ready for my, for me? Okay. All right. So I'm going to start with the new superintendent induction program. So believe it or not, I started on February first, um, as a superintendent. And, um, prior to that, I was your assistant superintendent. So that was a good thing because it wasn't long after when, um, my fear of having to call the first no day turned into canceling school for the rest of the school year. Who would have known? Um, and so in July, um, each new superintendent gets a mentor. So I had been a superintendent since February, but on July first, I was assigned a mentor. And I have been assigned through the, the, uh, new superintendent induction program, which is recommended for all new superintendents in Massachusetts. And I am fortunate to be, um, participating in. I was assigned a mentor. Her name is Maureen LaCroy and she is a former superintendent from Bedford. She has, uh, been wonderful. The focus of this program has really been important to me because while I have been focusing on, um, COVID and managing in an emergency, uh, environment, for lack of a better term. The focus of this group is really on teaching and learning, the instructional core and ensuring equity in our schools. And so it's been, uh, important for me to remain focused on what, um, what we all hope to be the focus of our work, uh, when we can get past, um, what is, um, this crisis. So we've all been leading during a crisis and doing the best we can. But it, it has been nice to work with a group of professionals, uh, that forces back to those questions of teaching and learning, the instructional core, equity for all students. And what she, um, has encouraged me to do in my, my first phase is to revise my superintendent entry plan, which I have and I have presented to you. When I first applied for the position of superintendent, I did a rough draft. In this new draft plan, you'll see that I have made some, some changes to it. But the, the purpose of a superintendent entry plan is to outline the intentional leadership actions to be taken during the first transition year. I have been learning about this district through the lenses of assistant superintendent for about two and a half years. It's only since February that I really started examining it through the lens of superintendent. And the entry plan will help me to deepen my understanding of the, um, district's core values, to identify the strengths and critical issues facing the schools. To provide opportunities for members of the community to come to know and understand me. To build trusting collaborative relationships with key stakeholders and to support the continuous improvement of the school and the district operations. Now fortunately, a lot of my experience has come from working a lot with key stakeholders over the past few months, perhaps more than I would have under different circumstances. So, um, it, believe it or not, uh, the crisis has, um, forced even more collaboration than perhaps would have been possible under normal circumstances, which is a good thing. You'll notice that my entry plan phases have changed. They have been updated to reflect, uh, the realities of the COVID crisis. And you see that my new entry plan begins in September of 2020 through January of 2021. I hope to have report of entry findings by March of 2021. And then develop a strategy for district improvement for April through August of 2021. So that will include, um, review of key documents, interview with key stakeholders, visiting schools at least twice a month. Attending faculty meetings at each schools, meeting with individual administrators, meeting with school committee members, uh, meeting with community stakeholders. Meeting with bargaining units, conducting a survey for parents, staff and students, just to name some of the things that are listed here in this plan. This will actually be, if you look at goals and phases, these will actually be my goals for the upcoming school year. And if Maureen were here, um, she would explain to you that this is typically what, uh, new superintendents do, um, during their first year. Their goals are, um, related to this entry plan. And then the findings are presented. And then those findings are used to influence, um, school improvement plans that the principals will be working on with their school principals. And, um, my future goals and metrics for my eventual evaluation as well. So, um, a draft of this plan will be available to principals. The goal will be for 2021. It will first be presented to the school committee for your review of that draft. But ultimately in the spring of 2021, we hope to have a, a draft of this plan. And then it can be used to influence our school improvement plans moving forward. So that is, um, just some insights into the way that the entry plan has been adapted. Uh, in addition, um, we will be looking to, um, put together a retreat for school committee members. And, uh, that went out today, an invitation to all school committee members from all of our, our towns, uh, to participate in with MASC. And, um, that will also be, um, an important step in my, in my entry as well. So it seems strange to me to be talking about my entry when I've been here since February. But it's also nice to talk about something other than, uh, the COVID nineteen crisis as well. So I appreciate you giving me the time to, to review that. Maureen is also happy to attend any school committee meeting and may, um, attend a school committee meeting in the future. As part of her role is to observe me, um, with different groups, to provide me with feedback and to help me improve my practice. And, um, so first I'd ask, is there any questions about the induction program or the revised entry plan? Okay. So then I think, um, the organizational chart, I think, John, you already handled that earlier in the meeting. Is that correct?
Yep. Get back to you on that.
So then I have for you, uh, drafted the school calendar. And you may recall that we changed the school calendar because, uh, the school year, per the Department of Education, changed from one hundred and eighty days to one hundred and seventy days. We still have time on learning requirements that we have to meet, but they have also been altered to reflect the one hundred and seventy days. The reason why the calendar is before you now is because in looking at, um, our half days, it makes more sense to us, given where we are with the hybrid model. And Wednesdays being a remote learning day, we would ask that you please consider moving our half days to Wednesdays, which is what this new calendar would reflect. So instead of taking away in-person teaching time for students, we would place those half days on our Wednesdays when students are not in class. And so we apologize for having to change the calendar at this time. But we feel that it is well worth our efforts, um, and inconvenience that it may cause because in the long run, it means more in-person time for our students.
I would like to make a motion to accept the revised two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school calendar with the early days being moved to the remote Wednesdays.
Absolutely. Second. Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thanks for doing that. I know we had talked about it at one point during the summer and, um, this is one of the many things on the list. So I think it makes, it makes, it makes a lot of sense.
So then for COVID nineteen and school start, I, I, I'm, they kind of blended together because our school start is so, uh, influenced by, um, the crisis. But we, school did reopen remotely on September fifteenth and then in person on September sixteenth. Uh, Ryan and I visited each of the elementary schools and Peter and his staff, uh, welcomed us and it, um, it did everyone, I think, a lot of good to see the, the students who were doing a great job. Following all the rules and wearing their masks and they really seemed happy, um, to be back in school. So it made all of these things that, um, have been taking place well worth the effort. I can't thank the school committee enough for their courage and their leadership throughout all of this. Um, and I feel, uh, guilty that I got to see their little faces and how happy they are and felt that sense of, uh, reward. But know that your time and energy and efforts are well spent, um, when, when children are able to go back to school and it, and they, they truly are happy. And their, their staff is taking good care of them. So, uh, we appreciate everything that you've done. We can't thank you enough. In terms of, uh, we are still working with our teachers association. And with regards to the, the, the new plans that are in place, uh, we are communicating with the board of health and monitoring the state metrics. Um, and we provided update scenarios from the Department of Education. The scenarios for what if a student tests positive, what if, uh, a parent tests positive? Those were sent out in my last, um, Parents Square email to all of the community. It is a link there, but it's also on our website. Uh, we have found, um, that really it's, it's critical that parents, community members, um, please let us know. Or one, keep your children home if in fact they're exhibiting any of those symptoms and, and contact the school nurse to discuss why your child may be absent. But number two, if in fact your child has been in close contact or your child and has received notification from the board of health. Or if, um, they're being tested for COVID, keep them out of school until you know what those results are. And if you know that someone has tested positive for COVID, please keep them calm and contact the board of health and the school nurse. Because again, sometimes we don't want there to be a delay and we want to notify people as soon as possible. So it's really very helpful to us if you communicate with your, um, your building principal or your school nurse so that we can, uh, be in contact with the board of health and make sure that we've done everything that we can to make sure that, um, those students, uh, receive whatever kind of attention they may need. But also to potentially quarantine so that we keep other people safe as well. It's going to be a community effort in order to keep our, our students in school. Um, and I know that that's important to everyone and I know that it's, um, has not been easy for everyone. The hybrid model is not ideal for anyone. But it allowed us to bring students back in person to the best of our ability as safely as possible. And, um, we'd, we'd like to try to maintain that, if not outdo that in, in the future. So, um, thank you for your efforts in terms of being open and honest and communicating these things to us. Because it, it really does help us to make sure that, uh, the students are practicing good social distancing or quarantining if they need to.
And. And. Yeah, I was just going to note that, you know, if you've been paying attention to the local news at all, um, there've already been in, uh, more than, more than a couple of districts within Massachusetts. Where a student was let into the school and either subsequently tested positive, uh, got a positive test result back, which means the student was tested before they went to school. Or the student was positive and was still sent to school. And you have a ripple effect that happens immediately in that community. And you know, we, we, in, in our district had the benefit of being notified quickly with some potential exposure. And we're able to, uh, you know, able to rush around, I think is the good way to put it. Um, late on Wednesday to try and make sure that we, we, we did everything we needed to do. And that is, that is absolutely imperative because, you know, and Jason, this may be a good opportunity to sort of talk a bit to the, you know, to the matrix again. And my folks of the matrix, and I, as I understand, it was actually used very, uh, helpfully in one of the districts that had an issue with the beginning of school. You know, if we have the case in the school, there is going to be a certain amount of time that we're going to be, the door is going to be closed for us to be able to figure out what happened or didn't happen. And hopefully it's as short as possible and everything ends up being good. But that's the risk that we have is that a student goes to school that is, is a potential exposure. If that ends up being not potential and ends up being, then we have to stop and try and assess. And any of these breaks are of course are not going to be ideal for the students, for the staff, for the cleaning we have to do with the school, so on and so forth. Or for the potential exposure that comes. But Jason, did you want to just touch on that for a minute?
So again, I just, I'd, I'd like to applaud the parents who are involved, the board of health, the schools for all working together to, to try and make sure we can keep any potential exposures to COVID from outside our building, from ever entering the doorsteps. But, you know, as you probably heard in the news last week, there were several school districts who've already had little hiccups along the way. And, um, you know, through my work with MASC and my background in science, I helped develop a matrix just to try and determine, um, you know, what kind of shutdowns you have and, and when they would occur based on certain triggers. A lot of this was based on the DESI's guidelines, the nineteen page guidance of what I've renamed what if COVID. I'm sure they had a more technical title for that little packet. But yes, several schools have had to already shut down, um, either cohorts, if they have good definition of cohorts of students or their entire school for a day or two right now. Just to do some contact tracing, make sure that they can, um, then reach out to the families, uh, to keep certain groups of students home until testing comes back and they get the all clear. You know, we're seeing a trend unfortunately in the state of, um, the cases starting to climb, which was anticipated by, um, the Department of Health when we opened colleges and schools back up. So we're keeping an eye on it and we're also cognizant of the fact that several municipalities have reported back to MASC that the data the state puts out every Wednesday is not accurate per their own boards of health or departments of health or, uh, health agents. So while that guidance is helpful that comes out from Mass DPH every Wednesday, we have to really lean on our parents and our own board of health and our own schools, um, to keep our kids and our community safe. and our own Board of Health and our own schools to keep our kids and our community safe.
Thank you.
So any questions for me with regards to reopening or anything that I may not have addressed that you would like to discuss?
Jill, I think there's probably two things that we probably should talk to the committee about. One is the question about a permanent substitute during this time. And then the other one I think we should talk to is the request from the teachers for either laptops or larger Chromebooks. And that's going to be largely dependent upon being able to access CARES funding. But we've had a bunch of emails that have gone back and forth between Anne and myself and Steve Pellon. We should probably talk through that a little bit too, to sort of get an understanding here while we have the full committee. So I don't know if we wanted to start with the substitute piece first?
Sure, I'll start with the building-based substitute first because it's something that we have done or some school committees have decided to pursue. We do anticipate that there may be more absences and we don't want people coming to school sick. But unlike in the past where you might be able to pull a few classes together and perhaps find coverage. We really can't do that necessarily if there are too many people out with social distancing. And so one of, one of the ways that some schools are approaching this is by just until December 30th, contingent upon remote or hybrid, no, contingent upon hybrid work. Sorry about that. Contingent upon hybrid work. The building-based substitute would be paid $150 per day. And the reason for that recommendation is to be competitive with other local school districts who are offering that. This person would come into the building every single day and be available to cover for any class or for any teacher who may require coverage. And this could be very helpful, in particular, in the fact that some people may be calling in sick the morning of and it's not always easy to find daily subs. So that's the reason why some schools have decided to, to go in this direction. We, we do have other elementary schools who have posted for a building-based sub to help provide that possibility. But again, it would be contingent upon hybrid or in-person learning because that's why we would need the building sub each day.
Jill, beyond the $150 per day price tag, if this person would be a full-time employee and also be afforded benefits potentially?
I'm going to defer to Christine because that I'm, I'm less, I'm less certain of because I, I don't know how that works for long-term subs.
And I also have a second question for Christine or for yourself, since we're in this tangent. Would this also end up qualifying someone for a different pay base because they're, they're potentially for such a long period of time?
So it's a, it's a new position in that it's a building-based sub. It's not a long-term sub for one person where you might be more likely to have to plan in addition to what the teacher may have left. And it's not the same as a daily sub who may not come in every day and is not responsible for creating the plans. What's different about this position is that this person is there every day and will provide coverage, whether it be for a class or a meeting or a teacher, and provide greater flexibility for the building principal. Again, it would, these positions in other schools have only been through December 30th in the hopes that it would be approved as a COVID expense and possibly permitted under CARES Act. We, we wouldn't be hiring this.
We can define the job description since it's a brand-new position.
Yes, in the sense that it's not currently part of a, a union.
Okay.
Our substitutes are independent, independent. But if we, again.
I'm just concerned with, you know, we, John and I, you know, sat through town meeting and we all worked on the budget and we know how close to the bone we are this year. You know, so this year I'm a little bit more focused on numbers than I might traditionally have been as a school committee member. So I, I'm just concerned with, with the number. So that's why I'm asking these questions. Christine, do you know if we would be on the hook for benefits for a person working five days a week for us?
It is a gray area because it's not a position that's traditionally been funded. It appears to me from everything that I've read that they would be eligible for benefits because they do meet the guideline of hitting 20 hours a week or more. Because what you've been able to do in the past with a substitute is that if they averaged 20 hours or more a week, they would become eligible. And that's just on a day-to-day event. This is a commitment that we've made for three months. So they would be eligible for that period of time, the three months that they were with us.
So we would need to tack on the Mayflower cost for individual or family plan potentially to that number?
I think we'd have to be mindful of that, that, that burden usually falls on the table. We would have to be mindful of that piece of it, yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask, ask a question? Has the union been approached about this particular question to see what their position is? Or is it just going to be a knee-jerk, like wait and see if they start filing grievances?
Well, this is yeah, this is, this is not, this is not something that they would impact bargain per se. Or subject to bargaining. However, with that being said, there is some concern about what our current rate of pay is for other groups who may find this more appealing than what they are currently making in some of theirs. So there, there could be an unintentional consequence. So you, you know, the problem is that if you put the pay the same as you have for a daily sub, then there's, other than benefits, which they may or may not be looking for, there's not much of an incentive to be a building-based sub versus a daily sub. In fact, you might be better off being a daily sub and deciding when you, when you want to work as opposed to committing to the three months. That's, that's the only concern here. It's trying to find a, a, a price range or an amount that will attract someone and help support the building principal and the teachers. Because they're going to be the adults in the building trying to make sure that the, the students are, are covered and cared for in the event that someone needs to be out sick and we can't get a daily sub to cover.
One, one other question. Would this daily sub be certified in all grade levels at our school?
No, as a daily sub, as, I'm sorry, as a daily sub, you don't need to be licensed. And as a building-based sub, you don't need to be licensed. However, if you were going to be the teacher for 90 days in the third grade classroom, you would need to have a license.
Okay.
So the, the flexibility of the building-based sub is that they're going to be covering for different people on different days. So they, they don't require the same licensure as a long-term sub would require.
Okay.
And then we have the, we have the added complication that at least as of what we know right at this moment that you know, we, we may have some CARES Act funds available, though it really depends on, on, on what we do or don't do with the remaining funds. You know, because again, it's a little squishy here. We know what the purchase orders are. But I had put a placeholder in for the computers. I'm not sure whether there is any other room there. But the money that we have currently is available through the end of October. And we do not know yet what will be available or not available between for November and December. Let alone for next year. And, you know, regardless, there's certainly the opportunity that there's still funds left that they may extend that, but, you know, they haven't been able to get too much accomplished at the federal level recently. So, and that's not really going to change before December 30, 31st. Or December 30th, right? I mean, that's, it's, it's the same folks will be there through the mid-part of January. So there's, I think, a number of challenges here. And I understand the need. I guess I'm, I'm, if, you know, if, if we had the money in the budget or at least a good chunk of the money in the budget, I would be less concerned. But I'm, I'm not sure that we do or know that at this point, since we've only just started the school year. And yes, we should be getting, I'm sure we've had some expenses we paid out of the budget that we're hoping to get reimbursed from CARES and so on and so forth. But Christine, you don't, you don't see any areas at this point, even with like in the voc line or in the teaching line and given that we've hired some new folks. Or do we already take a lot of that? And is the voc line really going to be up on transportation and down on tuition and balancing out? Knowing that you have your crystal ball that's always accurate.
Right over here. I, I don't think I'd be prepared to answer that question yet. You know, there may be some savings, but even the savings that I talked about with our district vocational. I believe we reduced our budget to, I want to say 90? So, I mean, I might have some savings there, but maybe 20,000. It's, so it's nothing huge. I was just looking quickly at our substitute line and I think we've already had to start, start accessing that. So as we get a little deeper, we may have a better sense of that. And I have not had the chance to encumber apparel yet to see if there's a savings from hiring of new staff members at a lower rate than retired members are at. So I can't answer that question just yet.
No, I understand.
And John, I just, I want to bring it back to the fact that we had come in with a budget around 3% and we whittled it down to 1.6 at the behest of the town. You know, we have the UNIVENDS wide open and we're going to try and leave them open as long as possible, which is going to increase the cost, heat that air that's coming in from the outside. You know, we have a lot of unknown costs that are potentially coming down the road. And again, I would be very interested to know, you know, some cost implications of insurance for this position as well, because I, I understand the $150 per day goes to that individual. But if we're talking about insurance as well, we, we do carry a burden in terms of health insurance for those employees, which is probably considerably more than most people realize. And that adds to the bottom line yet again. So I'm just, I'm concerned right now that we're, we're potentially spending money that we're, we're going to have to go back to the town at some point for a special town meeting. I just want to be really careful.
And I think I've, I've said this in some other, you know, meetings that I've been on. You know, if, if we have things that we know we need to do and they're outside of what we envisioned. I mean, we made it very clear to the town, Finance Committee and Selectmen, that we were budgeting, you know, just with our budget. And that, what I mean by that is that we have no idea what the pandemic was going to have from an impact. We couldn't guess at that. And if we did, we would just be guessing. In fact, we'd probably be just as well if we were darts at a dartboard. As a result, the budget was kept as trim as possible and everybody helped us get there. And so I don't have a problem going back and saying, this is a cost that we need to incur. And it's going to be, likely be over our budget and we will be back at town meeting in May to recoup some of that and we need to start planning for it. That said, I, I'm not sure that right at this very moment, I have enough of the details in order to be able to know what that price tag might be. Or that we have fully thought through that cost, particularly to the point of adding insurance, where we might. And again, if we, any place we free up a little bit of money because, you know, the gods are kind to us from a voc perspective and there's now one tuition we're not paying. That's typically where our buffer is to be able to deal with the other unforeseen things that have nothing to do with the pandemic. You know, and we have the pandemic piece of that. And I have already spoken about the utility costs to the town and that that is going to be, you know, outside of what we normally have planned because how would you know, right? Maybe we have a mild winter, who knows? But I, I think we need to sharpen the pencil a little more on this. I think the need is, is understandable, but I think we need to make sure we have a very clear understanding of what the potential cost is. That, and we have to be willing to, willing to accept that even if we figure this out in a week or two and we say yes, that we mainly have funding through the end of October from CARES. And either we need to build that into what we're doing in the building or we need to understand that those costs may be there and then we have to get the town comfortable that they could be. And the CARES piece of it's a little funky too, because we have to, we have to apply for reimbursement weekly on that in order to be able to get that funds. So we have to pay the, we have to pay the person, we have to have a record of paying them. And we have to be able to provide that in. And then of course we'll have to do that at the end of October. We would have to get that one in sort of ahead of time in order to be able to get it in under the limit to get that reimbursement. And then we're going to sit there waiting to understand what the other available funds are or aren't. And then we have to suck that up against theirs. So there's going to be a period of time we're going to be paying where we, we don't know whether we're reimbursing or not. So this is complicated. But I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm certainly not saying no yet. I just don't feel like we have all of the information we need to be able to, or me to be able to have a conversation with town administrator and fully understand what we are or aren't doing. Other comments, questions, thoughts? So just to, just to get an idea, since we will, we will end this meeting and this will still be my trouble. Do how do folks feel about this from a, from a need perspective? I mean, school committee members. I mean, it, there's, there's a need piece of it and there's a monetary piece of it. And we have to figure that out. I'm just trying to get some guidance to try and work on this. I mean, I don't think I know our next meeting is early November and we'll talk about that before we're done, whether we need something in between, at least for an update, not a full meeting, but something in between. And, but I also know that this is a, this is a concern for the about whether they're going to have to be able to hold some of the classes if we have someone out.
So I guess my question, to be a better advocate for this to our town leaders would be, I understand this from a containment perspective, having someone who's the same person who's in our building. So the exposure is to that one individual. We're bringing one more person into the family, so to speak. But I need to understand, do we have capacity to handle a teacher being out with the current staffing that we have? So we wouldn't need to reintroduce a, a new person? Is there any way to cover from within if we have a teacher out? Or is this critical to the operation for our in-person and our remote teaching that we're trying to do at the time?
I feel like I could speak to that a little bit, Jason.
Thanks, Peter.
With the current cohort, the current cohort's in place the way they are right now. We, we've taken our interventionists and stretched them about as thin as we can go. We're three days in with live teaching and we've had to get a substitute every single day so far. And the sub-list, we, we had a situation a couple of hours ago where we thought we had somebody set up for a Thursday, Friday of this week. And even that substitute then said, you know what, I'm backing out. My husband doesn't want me to come in based on the current situation. And as I, as I first said, the, the current configuration of our cohorts, it is a house of cards and it is very, very fragile. I, I think that John had made mention earlier in the summer about, you know, it's, it's not going to take much more than one or two teachers that can't come in where we, we may just have to say, you know, it's going to be all remote today. I, I'm, I'm looking at this through the lens of almost like a, a college campus or a college classroom where there may be days where we might have to cancel classes because I don't have anybody in place to actually deliver instruction. So I, I definitely understand and respect the, the monetary aspect behind this. And, and I know how fragile our, our budget is. But I, I do have to say that we're already having a tough time getting subs.
And then, and then I guess I'm going to throw this out here because I know you have a crystal ball too. So I mean, does one, does one make that difference?
Well, we got, we
You know what, you know what I'm, you know what I'm trying to get at here? So, okay, we do this and we add it and yet we're still closing down periodically because we have two or three teachers out and we can't, we can't cover that.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a very, that's a very realistic possibility. We, I hate to say got lucky, but we had We, I hate to say got lucky, but we had somebody that had to be out last week and we were still doing kindergarten screening. And I was able to pull somebody in, kind of plug them into another grade level. It certainly wasn't ideal. And, and as I said, it was almost lucky that, that we were doing K screening at that time. But I, I think, again, three, four days into the new school year and we're, we're already having a difficult time getting subs. It, it's going to get nasty, I think, when we get into cold and flu season. And, and, you know, you get into the fall and winter months and it's not in the least bit uncommon for us to have one or two people out. But to your point, John, and I, and again, I understand if, is one person going to make that much of a difference? That, that I think is the, the biggest question. So from a building standpoint, I think I can see the argument both ways, absolutely. But I can tell you that I'm, I'm already looking at Thursday, Friday and I, I need to find somebody and yeah, that, that's, it's going to be an issue.
So, and so what, so what we, we have for, for a lot of the grades, and I guess it's not for every grade, but for some of the grades here, it looks like we have teachers teaching both a cohort A and a cohort B. And that's probably where we're particularly problematic. I mean, is their ability to switch if you have one teacher teaching cohort A and one teacher teaching cohort B, that, that they could, that you could have one teacher teach the week in? Because so part of the issue, I think one of the big issues we have here is we're, we're trying to deal with not only for the students that you don't give them a time and send them to school and hope they make it through till two, right? That can't happen this year.
Right.
We just want to do that for our teaching staff, right? And so for all of the times that all of us have gone to work knowing that, eh, I don't feel 100%, but you know, we'll make it through. And you know, probably most of the time that's absolutely fine. It's not fine this year. So I do encourage people to, to stay home. You know, if you feel good, you should still be able to work, but work remotely. The issue is, is what we do with the 10 kids sitting in the classroom? You can't just have the teacher on a video screen at the front going, you know, Timmy, don't do that, you know? It's not going to work. So that's really the huge challenge, right?
Correct, absolutely correct.
Okay. Yep.
So what, Christine, if, I know we did the financials already tonight, but what, what did we budget for substitute line for the year? Because I'm hoping, John, you know, if this is something we pursue and we have somebody in the building every single day, we potentially would not have to draw from that line as much as we have in previous years.
Unless we deplete it in the first three weeks.
Right. But you know, I'm just trying to do a little bit of gerrymandering here because you know, $34,000 is 1% of our budget, you know? And that's kind of the number I have in my head right now for this position. We're, we're potentially backfilling our budget by almost a percent this year, if, if we do this. And I, again, I understand the health reasons why we would do this and the educational reasons why we'd do this.
We budgeted $38,251.40 for the substitute line.
Thank you, Christine.
And our substitute amount per day is what right now?
95.
Yeah. I, I think another problem that we encounter here is outside of the, the class, how feasible is it really to notify parents at 6:30 in the morning that they can't go to work? And, and what kind of fallout are we going to see from that? Where we go to remote learning for the day and then, you know, however many, you know, 150 kids stay home. And, you know, 60 or 70 families all of a sudden can't go to work. And I mean, is the economic fallout going to be even more devastating for all the families in town for us not to eat this?
Yeah.
So I know, I know.
Yeah. And Dan, that's a great point because I mean, that might happen because of things outside of our control. But this might be an area where we have a little bit of control.
I just see this as a very small expense to mitigate just the, just the parents, just the families that may not be as lucky as myself, where my wife works during the day, I work during the night. So somebody's going to be there. But there's a lot of families that just aren't going to be able to take that hit six or seven times in a month. And then their employees may not want to give them that hit. Not every employer out there is, is quite amenable to just random call-ins. So I, I would, I would almost say that we would be not only taking, taking the money on and, and trying to figure it out, and I don't handle the money thankfully, you guys do. But you know, I, I just think it's a small investment just for the community in general. Just because, I mean, that was the biggest concern with everything that we've been hearing is, I need to go back to work, I need to work, I need to work. And then, and then we hit them on Thursday and Friday, sorry, you can't go to work because your three kids have to stay home. And it's like, you know, so I, I think we, we just have a moral responsibility to the families in general. I don't, I don't know if maybe moral is a, that's probably not the right word, the right word. But, but yeah, I definitely, I, I'd like to weigh that into this whole decision. I just, I just think it's definitely a valid point, but.
When, when put like that, you know, from an overall town budget perspective, you know, if we're, if we're, what are we, a third, third of the, third of the budget? So you're talking about 2.33% budget increase in order to be able to try and keep the number of families in town being able to, one, keep their kids in school and two, be able to go to work? So I think, why don't we do this? If, if we can try and sharpen our pencils a little bit about potential costs, I, I'll, let me catch up with the town administrator about this. I, I think it's, it's important for town to sort of think about this both from a, you know, and, and think about it theoretically. And, and the hope is, is that we can get some reimbursement from CARES funds. Even if, even if we only get four or five weeks out of it, that's four or five weeks we don't have to pay, right? And that's, you know, that's 750 bucks a week plus the insurance piece of that, which is probably a pretty decent chunk as well. So maybe it's 1,100 a week, 1,200 a week. So, you know, if we can mitigate some of that, then we can. And if there ends up still being more funds available to that, I think Jill, you had also told me that, that this would be contingent upon us being hybrid or remote. That should we return to full in-person learning some point later this year, meaning later in the school year, I think it's happening later this year, calendar year wise, that this position would cease, right? It's only for hybrid and, no, it's, it's for hy, for hybrid only, correct. So if we're full, if we have to go full remote, if the state, if things shut down again in November, December for two months, we're not paying the position. So Jill, we'll regroup in a few days. I'll reach out and get some time with Liz and start talking with her so she can talk to the selectmen and finance committee and, and, and get some feedback there. Just, just, I think, I think we should evaluate it as is. And any CARES Act funds that we're able to access to offset is a bonus.
And I just want to say to, to Dan, great point, well said. You know, you kind of turned, you turned me on a dime there with how you put it. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
You sit here listening.
Yeah. And, and again, I'm, I'm reiterating, I, I think we need to talk, to think about this without the CARES Act funding and because otherwise it's too complicated. And then we can apply that lens to it afterwards and see reimbursement where we can get it. All right. That will simplify the discussion. Well, that was fun. Let's talk about computers. Anne, do you, do you want to join me for this discussion a little bit? I can, I can summarize it and then we can kind of get some additional input. As, as part of our discussions that we've had, you know, working on, working with the teachers and their, and the reopening, you know, they're, they're, not surprisingly, things are a little bit challenging on a small Chromebook. And so the original request was to get laptops. The back and forth, I'll summarize Steve's points and then Anne, you can jump in as well. Steve was concerned from a support perspective about having actual laptops, meaning what most of us have where it is a self-contained unit and lots of stuff happens on the machine itself, that he's, his resources are stretched pretty thin from an IT perspective. As a result, he's very cautious about laptops because they, they require a lot more work to keep up, maintained, as well as when things don't go right, it takes more time to deal with it because the Chromebooks, for those that don't know, are basically the equivalent of a, of a, of a, of a screen and keyboard that really runs off the internet. And so everything is sitting up on the internet and it's just an access device to the internet and the programs that are there. You do not have the programs sitting really natively on the machine, which is why I think it has a 16 gigabyte hard drive in it, which I look at and go, are you kidding, right? And then my phone is 512 or whatever, right? So you know, it's, it's, it's very easy to pretty much reboot. If you have an issue with a Chromebook, you reboot it. If it's physically broken, you replace the piece and move on. So Steve was, one of the suggestions he had, that they do make a larger version of the Chromebook with a 14-inch screen, which would therefore have the same capabilities of, from a, from a visual perspective, for the machine being able to utilize the screens. It would have the same capabilities of connecting the same way that a regular, our regular Chromebooks do. It also, from a cost perspective, is probably half the cost of a laptop. And he was saying that laptops typically are going to be around the 12 to 1300 dollar range. We haven't gotten into the discussion about whether we can even get any of these things yet because I think we need to sort of first understand whether, whether, whether we can, whether we can go there. Anne, I'm going to be quiet since I've talked most of tonight and let you jump in with anything on that.
Thank you. And thank you for taking the time to discuss this. Yeah, so I approached the teachers, oh, you know, after speaking with you and asked them what they felt like they needed. And they mentioned laptops. The Chromebooks just have not been sufficient for the use. I admittedly am not the most tech savvy of the group. However, there's a lot of younger teachers that I work with that are very tech savvy. They're very comfortable with the, with technology. Some of the drawbacks of the Chromebooks are we can't print from them. For some reason, we cannot print from a Chromebook, even these newer ones Steve is talking about getting, unless we're working from home. And at that point, you know, if we're in the classroom, I don't know if parents or, or the school committee is aware of this, but right now our teach, our classrooms are being used for everything. Excuse me, the specialist's lessons are projected up on our board. So we do not have access to our desktop computers during specialist time, which is our prep time. And it's about 40 minutes, it's only 40 minutes long. So in that 40 minutes, we have to get our work done. And if we have a Chromebook with us that is not able to print, it's basically not useful for us at all. So having the, what I did as a stopgap is just set up a schedule for us to be able to use the computer lab. But at the same time, that means we have to get up, get to the computer lab, log into the computers, have everything up and running, try to print everything, have everything work, hopefully, you know, printers don't always listen to what we tell them to do. And, you know, log out of the computer and get back to our classroom and go to the bathroom and our 40-minute timeframe. Having a laptop, because right now, basically, we're, everything we are doing is to be portable. Having a laptop will allow for us to be able to be mobile, use that 40 minutes wisely and get things done efficiently. The way I look at the Chromebook is it's an extra cost for teachers. We'd have to be printing from home, which means we'd have to be paying for our own ink. And only, and it only works on certain types of printers at home. So unless we have that, it wouldn't be able to work. And many of the teachers have said to me that if we get stuck with the Chromebooks, which is basically the same tool the children are using, where we're really trying to make this work. We have been working tirelessly, our teachers, our office staff, our paraprofessionals, everybody in our building has been working overtime on everything. Time is precious to us. We've, you know, I think we've left, I left work today at probably about 4:30 today because I had to leave to get my daughter. But having these laptops would be much more efficient. And teachers have come to me, teachers are, we're, we're part of this tight budget. You know, money is, we didn't get the, the increase in our salary that we expected to get this year that we had budgeted for. And teachers are coming to me saying, if we're going to get Chromebooks, I'm just going to have to try to figure out a way to get a laptop. Because, you know, we're supposed to be working on the school provider technology, but honestly, the Chromebooks just have not been, we're getting knocked off online all the time. You know, my Google meets, I think the other day by 8:40, I was knocked off at least three times. And so I have to use my desktop when it's available to do my Google meets. So overall, I just really strongly, as you can see from my email exchange, and myself and the teachers around me are leaning more toward the laptops if possible. I understand Steve's points completely, but we too are working above and beyond. We're, we're, we're going way above and beyond. And these laptops will make us, have us be able to make better use of our time. And that's what we need right now.
The, can, and I, and I don't say this by any means to be derogatory because I'm a non-tech person myself. But, but can one of these tech savvy people put together a, because I know, I know I get laptops at work. When, like they give me a new one every year and they send me these sheets and they tell me what's going to be in it and tell me if they, I need something else. And every year I hand it to someone much younger and more savvy than I am and say, is this going to work for me? And so I, I can't tell you what would, a good laptop would be for what a teacher needs. So can somebody or collectively put together the bare minimum? Because we can't really even price it out because you can go from $1,000 to a $5,000 laptop. And so before it could even be realistically entertained, I think we'd need a specific breakdown of what we're looking at and how many we need. And then my follow-up to that is, could we seek out donations from, I know we don't have very many companies in town, but people that would like to maybe donate? And like you get one company that might want to buy three, three of these laptops. And then maybe we get some kind of a package deal put together with a provider that if we buy 30 of them, but you know, we get somebody to pick up a few. Maybe a family would even donate a laptop and so forth. But then we get the universal model that everybody agreed that was okay. I don't just, I'm just spitballing an idea here, trying to head off the town having to foot this bill.
Well, you know, the, I don't think this is, this is one that would be difficult for us to go to the town for. I put a, I put a placeholder in for CARES Act funding for this. So the chief is aware of that. I may not have put enough in if we end up going the laptop route, but we'll have to see. But I think that we, we have to get to some level of closure with respect to what we can or can't do. It just seems, it seems odd to me that you can't print from a Chromebook. So I understand you can do it at home, but you know, is there a solution there? Because certainly it, that's, that's a, that's an issue that's, that's not working right. And so Jill, I don't, I don't know, does it make sense for us to try and find some time to get with Steve and Anne and either you or Ryan to just try and be able to talk through and see what we can and can't do? Because, you know, and, and then, and then we have the, so let's say we get to something and we might not be able to get them. And it took us three months to get the invoice for the 50, 45 Chromebooks. So God knows what that means or whether it's a laptop or a bigger Chromebook. that means, or whether it's a laptop or a bigger Chromebook, and whether they're even available, and whether you can get them, you know, anytime soon, I don't know. But, you know, Steve is, Steve definitely has concerns from a staffing perspective and being able to manage laptops, not just for the short term, but, you know, for their lifecycle. And, and if they could print, does the bigger Chromebook help, or is it more of the same? And also, do the staff have new Chromebooks, or are they using what, on a varying, you know, sort of a staggered basis based on when they were issued? And I don't know whether a new Chromebook or an older Chromebook makes any difference. I'll sit down.
I can speak for myself. I do not have a newer Chromebook. I've been using, my original teacher Chromebook had stopped working without its cord. It had to be plugged in the entire time last year during the initial closure, so I had to get a replacement one from the school. So I've been working with the student Chromebooks this whole time. The printing will help. I do know that a lot of people have been saying that, and I'm, again, I'm relying back on the tech savvy people, looking for things that are more compatible with Windows and different operating systems for the work that they're doing. So I'm sure the printing will be a help, but it's, yeah, I just, like I said, I'm not the most tech savvy to talk about all this, but I do know that we do need, we're basically working with like a mobile office, just moving from one place to the other and trying to be as efficient as possible. And I understand his concerns, I mean, I totally, I do. It's just, I know that people are looking to start, I think regardless, I don't know if it's a comfort level, I, you know, personally, and Steve said in his email, he said, any tech savvy person would say laptops are much easier to work with. But we're leaning toward Chromebooks for you and the teachers. A lot of our jobs right now are web-based, and we are going to be online, working with different technology. I know on my Google meets the other day, I got knocked off three times before 8:40 in the morning. And I kept, I changed Chromebooks throughout the day. I've been circling through at least three from the top of my Chromebook cart. So I don't know if that's a Chromebook issue or what the issue is, it definitely doesn't help. You know, I feel like, so I don't know exactly about the operating systems and whatnot, to be honest with you, as far as what works best.
Okay.
And even those screens, they are so small.
Yes.
I look at, even my kids watch, I got them another monitor, so I can hook it up to that, and they can see it much larger, because it is so tiny. So I'm not even sure how the teachers are even using a Chromebook for all, I have no idea.
Now, the one he was suggesting, if we were to, if we were to go that route of buying specific Chromebooks for the teachers, they are quite a bit bigger. So it's a 10-inch screen, I think, on the standard Chromebooks, and this goes to a 14-inch. It looks, it looks like a laptop, rather than sort of a half of a laptop, which is what the existing Chromebooks look like. So that would, I'm sure, be better. But I think we need to, we need to, I think we need to get everybody together to figure out what we're going to do or not do. You know, I was pretty urgent about this when I thought it was October 2nd. I'm only just a slight bit less urgent about that with October 30th, because time seems to go at different rates during the world of COVID. So I think we need to just try and get everyone together and try and figure out what the plan is or what other options there are to remedy some of the, some of the issues that you're having, especially since, you know, we're doing remote for part of this regardless, and there's always, there's definitely the opportunity that we will have periods of remote learning without being in the building, and then you don't have access to the desktop computers or anything. You know, it would seem to me at a minimum that we should be operating with the newest machines that we have for the teachers, at a minimum.
Can I put in my two cents?
Yep.
So I'm just trying to conceptualize what it would be like to run a classroom in person or remote using a Chromebook, which I'm very familiar with. I've had access to a laptop during my remote teaching and now during my hybrid teaching. And on a daily basis, John, I'm using my machine to create videos that then upload to Schoology. Some of those videos are only four or five minutes long, and they're three or four gigs in size each. Now, I can put them right on my desktop and then import them right into Schoology. It takes me about eight minutes per video, from production to posting. I could not do that using a Chromebook. The idea of not being able to print from wherever I need to print is just mind-boggling to me. You know, I am right now on my most important tool that I use to teach. This is the new, you know, chalkboard. This is everything to a teacher, especially with the situation we're in now. You know, the eyes effect, minimum, Amy just said it perfectly, she went out and got a bigger screen for her kids for the eye strain. And we have teachers working beyond what the kids are working, to try and make everything work. So I understand Steve's concerns. I know that there's ways for him to do an administrative, remote visualization of computers. It's something else to add to his list, but if it could be some burden, we take off the teachers, if we could give them a 21st century tool to teach with, you know, and this seems pretty straightforward for COVID money, one shot, we buy it, and then we can readdress it when it comes for a readoption phase four or five years from now. If we can make their lives a little bit easier, and that can translate into better lessons and less stress for them and for our students, I think it's a great idea to do it.
So here's a thought, so Steve, you know, laptops are $1,200 bucks. Apparently, you can get a MacBook Air for $899 at the education store from Apple. And that's what I have for my personal computer. I think it has a slightly bigger hard drive or whatever.
Before you switch operating systems on Steve.
Well, I understand that, but, but he doesn't have any of those oper, you know, I mean, yes, he has them at desktops, but he doesn't have any laptops that are running on those now. So, and, and I mean, from a usability perspective, I'm just trying to think of some other ways to think about this, you know, he's concerned about repairs and setup, and you bring them, bring that home, and you turn it on, and all of the, and there would be, there'd be, for folks used to Word and stuff, there's a little bit of a learning curve there using the Apple software, but it's all compatible. It's much smaller than it used to be, Jason, I know you've been using it for a long time like me. So I think, so Jill, any thoughts of how we corral this and?
So I'm going to send an email to Steve tonight, asking him to put together several proposals, and I will do my best to highlight some of the concerns that Anne has discussed tonight, such as printing, being thrown off, and whether or not that's a Chromebook issue, whether that's a connectivity issue, those kinds of things. You know, looking for something that will be dependable, a large enough screen, but also allows staff to print, will be key features of whatever proposals he puts together. And I will also note that their preference at this time is a laptop and not a Chromebook, but please let us know what the differences may be.
Yep.
And we'll start from there with Steve's proposals, and then we can look at those and discuss them as to what may or may not work for the teachers' needs. And is there anything else that I should mention, other than printing and connectivity?
Well, I think the screen readability is one of it, you know, because that's something you notice too. It's like, you can have a small screen that is very, very readable, because of its hot, because it's, you know, how it's designed versus one that's less expensive, where it's, you know, you need it bigger. So that's the, but please also thank him for all of his responses. I mean, he has, he has put a lot of thought into the replies that he has, and I think, you know, makes some good points. I just think we need to, we need to figure out a way to move forward as quickly as possible so that if, because, again, if the CARES funding goes poof, this is going to be a harder thing to get done. So, you know, that's the other piece of it, is that we would need to be able to execute on this and be able to have it set up and put in before the end of October.
And Jill, could I just add to that list for Steve, that the machine has the ability for the user to make video content?
Thank you, Jason, I was just going to add that as well, I appreciate that. Thank you for giving your input.
Absolutely.
Can I add just one other thing?
Go ahead, Dan.
I've probably been with Mac for, it's got to be 10 years now, and they are, they are very easy to work with, once you get over that initial couple of days of the different look. It just, it's very simple, but I know that Apple can be very finicky interacting with everything. It's all this licensing BS that goes on. So, I mean, they, I'd say they need to really make sure that everything on the platform that we're using with the Chromebooks has to be completely interacting with everything on a Mac, if they go with the Mac. And I really, I'm a huge fan of Apple, and you almost can't kill these machines, so I would think from a tech standpoint, this would minimize having to take care of 50 or 60 Microsoft-based machines myself, because these things just, they just don't die. I give them away when they give me a new one, because they're just, they're still viable machines. So, so that was my, my only concern, is that all the compatibility is there.
Well, I think, and I think that everything that we're utilizing, though, if you're talking about the Chromebook, is all web-based.
Okay.
Web-based, you won't have the compatibility issues, because it's just browser access, and you can get, you can get the Chrome browser as well if there is, for some reason Safari doesn't work, and get that on the.
I will caution, though, Apple can be finicky. They're very reluctant to deal with everybody, but if it's, everything is web-based, then it should be fine, but I just wanted to throw it out there, just to make sure.
I do have a seven-year-old MacBook Air downstairs that is still fully running as fast as it did the day it came home, which is, I bought another one because it was time, and now that's being used by everyone else in the family, to your point, Dan, they just kind of move along.
But even speaking to the 45-minute prep period, where now we're utilizing teachers' workspaces, you can have your desktop up and have a second display on the smartboard or the projector, where that other teacher could be teaching their special class. So you wouldn't lose those 45 minutes.
Right. Yeah. You guys need that, you need that time. Jill, anything else from your perspective? You on mute?
Sorry about that.
All right.
I think we've covered it all.
Okay. So we, we are scheduled for, let's bring up my other screen here, we are scheduled November 2nd, which puts us almost six weeks out. I would suggest that we pencil something in on the calendar for a short update meeting, not to be going through all of the different items or minutes, but really focus on how things have been going in school and any hot-button issues for some time in, you know, the middle of October.
John, would it make more sense for us to have our advisory committee get together, and if needed, we could call a full school committee meeting?
If you think that's better, does that make Jill happier? Because I know you love meetings, I just don't want to take any away from you.
Well, it's entirely up to you. I mean, if we have something we need to vote, we should, we should meet. If, you know, but again, it's not just me, it's Christine and Peter also, so whatever.
How about we do this? How about we put something on the calendar with the goal of not meeting? And we will, when we do, that was going to be my last thing to mention, Jason, that we should, in the next week or so, get to get back together, the advisory committee, because we think we had agreed that it makes sense to do that after we've had a couple weeks under the belt, to see how things are going. But I just, I just know it's difficult to schedule things, so we placeholder something, unless Jill, your schedule is so crazy that it doesn't even make a difference. I know you've had weeks lately that you are going every night.
The difference is, is that whoever gets, whoever asks for it gets the night first, but there's been no slowing down, so I guess.
That's kind of my word. You need something to give me.
Yeah.
Getting it, but I would, but I promise to you that if we can get away without doing it, that we don't.
Sounds good.
Now I'm thinking, what dates do we talk about for the superintendent?
The 7th.
7th, okay.
We're meeting on the 7th.
Do you have anything on the 19th?
Let's see.
That's Kingston School Committee meeting.
Yes.
Well signed, two weeks away. How about during that week?
So we have Kingston and Silver Lake that week. We could do Tuesday, the 20th.
Yeah. What about, is the week before it better if we do later in the week then? I don't really want to jam you with.
Tuesday, the 13th is Halifax, and Monday is Columbus Day.
What about the 15th that week?
We could do the 15th.
I'm just trying to space it out, and then, again, if we don't need it, we won't do it. We're not going to get together just to see each other, we've seen that enough anyways. So let's, let's plan on a tentative meeting, a tentative update meeting. Again, it should be, the goal will be to be a short meeting if we need it, and in the meantime, for the Health and Safety Committee, I will, I will reach out to folks and we'll get something on the calendar between now and then for that, probably the, maybe the week of the 5th. Or, yeah, either late next week or the week, early the week of the 5th for that, and then we'll plan on, we'll hold, placeholder the 15th at 6:00 PM. And if we don't need it, we will be back here on the 2nd of November, day before the world changes. All right, folks, and here, what did I say earlier, that we never go long on the Plenton School Committee, we just spend over two hours? So that is my fault, I apologize to everyone for opening my mouth and not knocking on Anything else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Have a second.
Second.
Second from Dan. Thank you, everyone, have a great evening.
Good night, everyone.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.